Good evening, everyone. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the spirit of God, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. Got approval of the minutes for May 1st, 2017? Any additions, corrections? Comments?
A motion we approve the minutes from the May meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks, Steph. All in favor? Against abstentions, motion carries, thank you. Got approval for minutes of special meeting, May 23rd?
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Against abstentions, motion carries, thank you. I really don't have anything special for mayor's opening remarks. I'm sorry. Oh, financial reports, excuse me, getting ahead of myself, let's do financial reports. Questions, comments?
Can I just ask what the special appropriations to Albert Harrison? The $4,000 to Albert Harrison? Just curious, I was just curious to know what that was.
Engineering, I had some engineering done.
For where?
Commerce.
Okay.
Any other questions? Now I need a motion to approve. Thank you, Ted. Motion to second, all in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, now mayor opens remarks. I really don't have anything special, just want to welcome everybody here tonight to the meeting, so... Next, we'll have a public comment. Anyone want to come forward and public comment? No one coming forward? LaGrange Crossroad District report? Karen? Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, how are you all?
Thank you.
Good, hello. I will have a report to hand out to you all after the meeting. But did hit the highlights, we had a wonderful month as far as Arts on the Green. Was a huge success. I hope everyone got, had the opportunity to at least stop by. The vendors were happy, everyone that I seen speak along the way, they were happy with, with the quality and the vendors that they had the opportunity. Our concert last month in May, we had 300 to 350 people that attended, and so I thank you for helping spread the word on that. And then this Saturday, Wacky is going to be at the farmer's market, so if you would be there between 10:00 and 12:00, you may be able to have the opportunity to win some prizes. And then on Wednesday of this week, we're going to have a seminar for our businesses, anybody that would like to be for social media workshop. And I think that's all the highlights, since there's such a full docket, I will leave that. You have any questions for me?
That meeting is, okay, where?
Well, we have our strategic planning session that's on the 13th. That will be at City Hall, well, upstairs at the fitness, in the fitness room, at 8:00 AM. Then on Wednesday for the social media, that will be at the office, and that will be at 8:00 AM.
What was the date on the social media, was it this Wednesday or not?
This Wednesday, the 7th.
And I'm sorry, where was it going to be?
At the office, at our office.
Okay, at what time?
8:00 AM. And we're going to be discussing the Instagram and IFTTT, three Ts.
What does that stand for?
This, then that. It is a way to help promote the social media without having to post to each group, you can set parameters.
Getting any visitors at the welcome center?
We are, every day. It's wonderful. We had three today, a family, and then two others. And when it's been open for the events, the public restrooms are being used. Everybody really enjoys it. I've had the gentleman, two actually families that had grown up in the house, that stopped back by. And one was telling me where his grandmother's bed was, he got a little choked up. And then the other, they, it was brother and sister, so it's very, very nice. They're very proud.
It was nice to have the restrooms available for tracks, iTunes.
Very.
It was great, yeah.
And our artists, not everyone likes to use the portalets, they were very thankful to have the option, not to have to use that.
Alrighty.
They're willing to walk two blocks. Anything else?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
LaGrange Utilities? Come on down, Dad.
Good afternoon, everyone. LaGrange Utilities had its regular meeting on May the 8th at 412 East Jefferson Street. We discussed the Madison Street pump station, it's probably 78% complete at this time, they had to pull off for a little time for the control panel and the generator and a few little items to come in, they should be coming back this week to try to get all that wrapped up, it'll take them about another two weeks, once they come back onto the project to get it finished up, and then we'll see sidewalks go in, the roads paved, and all that, new pump station on Madison Street should be complete. We did look at the budget for 1718, it was presented to my board, it was approved by my board, and I did present that to you, mayor, I think you, I sent it to you an email, did you, okay, thank you, you did get it. Summit Park's new 12-inch water line, it's, it was about 50%, when I done this report, they're probably 60-plus now of running that water line from Summit Park all the way to Zell Smith Water Tower. We did discuss and to do an update on the computers, the computer system in our office, and that was approved by my board. 71 Interstate, as you all know, that's still a headache, I talked to District 5, I was talking to District 5 today, and he said, "They're not against it, it's in Frankfurt and Federal Highway that is who is still holding it up," that it, well, they was sent on from District 5 to Frankfurt, because I did meet with C.W. Sazmore today from District 5 over some other stuff, and he said that District 5 is not opposed to it, it's higher than them that's opposed to us going into Interstate. That's about all I have, our next meeting will be next Monday night at 4:00 PM, 412 East Jefferson Street, if anyone's interested, is there any questions or anything I could answer for you tonight, or if I don't have an answer, I'll try to get you an answer. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Next on agenda is open seal bids for property at 100 Pop Rally, so we didn't get any, so... We didn't get any at all. So we will go to the next code enforcement officer, Tom House.
Good evening. And as he said, I'm code enforcement officer, Tom House, for the city of LaGrange, if you could grab out of your packets a document that looks like this.
And if you don't mind, Stephanie, do you mind swearing him in so that he can provide testimony tonight? All you have to do is ask him if he'll tell the truth, the whole truth.
Yes. Okay. On May 2nd, I was contacted by Detective Shannon Cunningham of the LaGrange Police Department, he had some concerns about a property that he'd recently served a search warrant on. As we discussed the property and he shared photographs with me, I realized that this property was in violation of numerous city ordinances. If you'll notice in the section, "Dear Property Owner, I've determined that the LaGrange City Ordinance is 15501, 02, 15515, 16, 17, 18, 24, 25, and 27 were in violation." Now, these are the violations I focused, focused on, but those aren't, this citation's not limited to those.
And Mr. House, what's the address and the homeowner's name?
The homeowner is Stephen and Michelle Casey, 1618 Cedar Springs Court, and the homeowner, that was what was listed in PVA.
Was there a lien determined to be on any, on the property?
Yes, there is a lien against the property, it's held by... It's held by USDA Rural Development out of Lexington, Kentucky, so it's a government, it's an FHA loan.
Were there any private liens against the property?
Numerous private liens against the property.
Was any of them large liens that you can recall?
Yes, there are large liens, approaching $830,000.
Thank you.
So, I would like to walk through each of the violations with you, feel free to ask me at any time, any questions you might have, I've got photographs that were provided to me that were taken during the search warrant, so...
And Officer House, before we do that, do we know if the parties were served with notice of this hearing?
Yes, yes, they were served, Mr. Casey was served in the Oldham County Jail, if you'll turn to the fourth page of the complaint, he signed a receipt that he was served. I sent the other two complaints to Michelle Casey at her address in Campbellsville, and that was signed for by certified mail, and the one that went to USDA was also signed for, and I've got receipts for those. Okay, I'm going to switch this over so I can... So I can show you the photographs. I'm going to start out with the first three paragraphs here. 15501, the Kentucky Building Code, "Fitness for human habitation, occupancy, or use shall be determined in accordance with the criteria established in the most, most current edition of the Kentucky Building Code as adopted by reference in LaGrange City Ordinance 1501. Any building or structure which fails to meet such criteria, or has any defects set forth therein, shall be deemed unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use." 1502, "All buildings or structures within the city which are found to be dangerous or injurious to the health, safety, and morals of the occupants of the structure, the occupants of neighboring structures, or other residents of the city shall be deemed unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use." 15515, "No person shall occupy as owner, occupant, or let, or sublet to another for occupancy any dwelling or dwelling unit designed and intended to be used for purposes of living, sleeping, cooking, or eating therein, nor shall any vacant dwelling, dwelling, building be permitted to exist which does not comply with the following requirements in this subchapter." Because I want to set some background for you, so you know, this is, this is right out of our city ordinance, so... Sorry, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to boot the computer up. But I've got, I've actually got printed photographs, if I need to go there, so... I'll just jump into 15516, sanitary facilities required, hot and cold water supply, water heating facilities, I'm not going to read each of these to you, but basically you have to have running water, a way to heat it, and get it through the house. And if you'll notice, on page five, "Per LaGrange Utilities, water service to the property has been shut off since September 29th of 2016," so there's been no water to this house for seven months. And there's a letter from the Director of LaGrange Utilities indicating that when the water was shut off. And I've also got some photographs. Okay, photograph 2A. This is a sink in one of the bathrooms, kind of, you can kind of tell, you can see it on your computer screens in front of you, or you can look at the computer screen behind you. There hadn't been running water for seven months. And then I'm going to show you photograph 2B, again, no running water in this house for seven months, and there were people living there. Okay. 15524, electrical systems, every electrical outlet and fixture shall be, I'm just going to paraphrase, must be installed per electrical load as adopted by the Kentucky Building Code 15501, so these have to comply with the building code and the electrical code. Got photograph 1A. You can see this, you can see this fixture up in the corner, there are wires running out of it to, to light who knows what, there's, there's several, several different, that's not the code. Photograph, let's see, 1B. You can see wires hanging out of the ceiling, that was obviously a can light at one point, here's a, another hole in the ceiling with wires hanging out, and there's an extension cord draped across the, across the room that was used to power other things in the home. This is in the kitchen, you can see the vent hood has been knocked off, the wires are hanging loose, we've got an open outlet over here, that's not the code either. Okay, moving on. 15525, exterior and interior structure, protective railings. Basically, protective railing says, "Protective railing shall be required on any unenclosed structure over 30 inches from the ground, or any steps containing full risers or more." And I know, based upon personal inspection of the property, this has been like this for about six months, that I know of. Okay, 15520, or 15525, that was F, now we're going to go to H. Windows to be glazed, window sashes, basically for homes to be habitable, they have to have good working windows that are solid without cracks, must be openable with good, good window hardware. You can see the window up here in the corner of the house, it's broken out. The next photograph, that's not it. Number three, different window in the house, completely broken out. Viewed from the inside of the house, you can see the windows are all cracked, the panes are broken. Other view of the, from the inside of the house, cracked windows, just taped, not fully shut. Okay, moving on to K, hardware, every exterior door shall be provided with proper hardware and maintained in good condition, door frames must close and be able to seal the home from weather. Here's a picture of the front door from the inside, you can see it obviously doesn't have any hardware on it, can't be closed and sealed, it was, it did have a board across it, I'm assuming to prevent people from getting in, so... Moving on to Section P, subsection 1, "Every floor interior wall shall be substantially rodent-proof, sound condition, good repair," so on and so forth. You can see here's some of the, now the door is not, not actually considered part of interior wall, but both of these interior walls have plastic carving them, and there's substantial damage behind them. Another picture of an interior wall in the home. Another picture, you can see the damage to the drywall, it's like there's holes punched in several portions of the wall. More damaged drywall. And more damaged drywall. Damage to the ceiling, and some more electrical issues, there's some wires hanging out. Let's see, 12. Well, that's a photo you already seen, but there's damage to the drywall there. And more damaged drywall and drywall in the closet. Okay, those are, those are of the interior of the home. 155, moving on to 15527, these are sanitation requirements, and it basically addresses care of the premises, how you're supposed to take care of the outside of your house. It basically says, "It shall be unlawful for the owner or occupant of residential property to use, utilize the premises for the open storage of abandoned motor vehicles," basically rubbish, trash, and all that. You'll notice it says, "It shall be the duty and responsibility of every owner or occupant to keep the premises of the residential property clean and to remove the trash upon notice from the appropriate city official." I've notified him numerous times personally about the, the trash, so I've got reference photos. Here again, this is back underneath the, the deck on the back of the house, a couple of couches back there, mattresses, and just, you name it, it's back there. More rubbish against side of the house. And this is just kind of a close-up view, you can see there's a, there's a couch here, and there's a mattress underneath over here. So, per our ordinance, per our ordinance and our complaint procedure, I had to notify the owners and all interested properties of my intent and the fact that I declared this house and through my investigation to be unfit for human habitation. What I'm asking from the city council is your concurrence that this house is unfit for human habitation, and then you can make disposition on what you'd like to happen with it. Steve's been kind enough to draw up a form that all I need, need from you is for you to fill this out, and let me know what, what our next steps are. At this point, do we allow any interested parties to come forward, or?
Well, actually, at this point, we need to see if anyone is here on behalf of the respondents to the complaint, are Mr. or Mrs. Casey present? Are Mr. or Mrs. Casey present? Are Mr. or Mrs. Casey present? Are there any lien holders or mortgage holders that are present? Lien holders or mortgage holders that are present? Lien holders or mortgage holders that are present? If not, we can now hear from interested parties who may have a stake in the outcome here.
Okay.
Is there anyone present who has a stake in the outcome of this hearing? And if you'd like to come forward, make a statement, you're welcome to do that, if you'll just come forward and be sworn? You will, please raise your right hand, and Stephanie will administer the oath.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And you state your name for the record, please?
Lois Forgy, F-O-R-G-Y.
Is there a statement you'd like to make to counsel?
Well, I live at 1604 Cedar Springs, and, because I am retired, I've seen a lot of traffic, but my main interest is to see it just cleaned up, it hasn't had a garage door for many years, a lot of traffic in and out. And also, there's a gas tank and a gas can that's been sitting there for a long time, and I had an occasion the other night to call the police about some people messing around out there, and I was concerned, because I live alone, and I was worried that somebody might burn the house down. I mean, the gas can and the tank has been sitting there a long time, there's also a couch, you can see all of it from the street. But my concern is for safety, we've got lots of kids in the neighborhood, and myself, I've been there over 20 years, and I'd like to see it cleaned up.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to make a statement? If you would, Mr. House, can you... If you would, Mr. House, can you summarize? Oh, do we have another person?
I couldn't hear a word she was saying.
You're welcome to come forward and make a statement of your own. If I can summarize, and you tell me if I'm wrong, your statement was that there were things near the property that caused you concern for safety. Is that correct? Yes, yes ma'am.
I'm just, because of the fact.
Please, please come forward. Just raise your right hand and be sworn.
I swear to tell the whole truth. Nothing was true.
Thank you. If you would state your name.
Lori Ryan.
And what's your address?
1626 Cedar Springs Court.
Thank you.
Sorry, I've run kites, but.
Would you like to make a statement?
Yes, I would love to see this house just totally gone. This has been an ongoing problem for, I graduated from Oldham County High School with my six, or oldest daughter, she'll be twenty-seven. When she started kindergarten, we moved back out here. We chose the house on that street because of the double cul-de-sac. Steve Casey moved in and it was nothing. It's been horrible. I was sickened by the fact, I mean, we knew drug dealing was going on. We kept reporting it to police. We kept reporting it to everyone. But to find out what happened to these young girls up there, it sickens me when I have two younger girls. My youngest daughter just graduated from high school Saturday. And to think I've been living in there with a man.
Steve, we need to take us back to the point of order. Has nothing to do with the house part of it.
I'm just, I was afraid of what, because there's been certain neighbors that have protected him. I'm sorry.
No, I understand what you're saying ma'am, but there's a case still pending on this?
I understand.
So, okay, that's, thank you.
I'm just saying, there's, my head stopped up. I can't, couldn't hear what anybody's been saying about him, so.
But I think you, I heard you say you'd prefer to see this house gone.
I would, yes.
Okay.
Have any of y'all ever driven up our street? Have you seen the house? What would you feel like? I mean, our property values are just, since April twenty-eighth, when he was put in jail, we've got kids playing in the street again. We've got families out talking to each other, neighbors out at their houses doing yard work. This guy has caused us. And I know, I know that's just part of the case, but I would just like to see the house gone and rid our subdivision of this memory.
Thank you.
That we've had to deal with for fifteen years.
Thank you for your testimony. If there's no one else to make a statement, Mr. House, would you mind making a concluding statement and asking the council what your, or providing the council what your recommendation is with respect to the instructions?
As I said, my investigation has determined that this property is unsafe and unfit for human habitation as it stands now. I would like the concurrence of the city council that that's the case. For our complaint procedure, you can, you have several options. You can demand that the property owner repair the property within a certain timeframe. You can order that the house be closed and/or demolished. So, the decision is gonna be yours. My recommendation is, at this point, to just concur with my recommendation that this house is unfit for human habitation. At least, give him thirty days to make repairs or give the property owners thirty days to make repairs and we'll take it from there. Our procedure gives the options for the property owners to appeal this, so I want to make sure we do everything correctly. Steve's given you some guidelines that are in the packet, but I need a written statement from the city council.
Officer House, do you recommend that the property be vacated?
I recommend that the property be vacated, correct.
Do you recommend that the property be demolished? If repairs are not made?
Yes.
And do you recommend that the property be closed until that time should occur?
Yes.
And is there a reason why you're making a thirty-day recommendation to repair, alter, or improve the structure?
I just picked a thirty-day date.
But it doesn't have to be thirty days?
No, it does not have to be thirty days.
And are you asking them to adopt the findings that you cited in your complaint?
Yes.
In your letter to Mr. Casey and Ms. Casey?
Yes.
And are you able to admit into our record a copy of all those photographs so that Stephanie can keep a record of that?
Yes, I'm prepared for that.
And are there any questions from council for Mr. House?
So I just want to understand, Mr. Casey is not currently residing in the house?
Correct.
And neither is Mrs. Casey?
Correct.
And how long have they not been residing in the house?
I don't know about Mrs. Casey, but Mr. Casey has not been residing there since April twenty-eighth.
And you showed the electrical violations, but their water's been turned off. Do they actually have electric in the house?
Yes.
That they've been paying for?
At my last knowledge of it is yes, there's electric in the house.
And how long have they lived in that house?
Give me a moment, I can get that for you. The deed was entered the twelfth day of September nineteen ninety-six. Any other questions?
You mentioned that the Casey's weren't living there. Is anyone living there at all?
No.
Okay.
I will, I will tell you that since I sent the letter to the mortgage holder, they've retained a company, a property management company. They came out and boarded up the broken windows. They put a sign in the window that said, "Please don't use the plumbing as it's been winterized", and they put a padlock on the front door. When I talked to a representative from the mortgage company, I said, "Does this mean that Mr. Casey or Mr. and Mrs. Casey cannot come back to the property?" They said, "No, we can't prevent that until we get a judgment." I will let you know that it is in foreclosure proceedings, but it is, since it's an FHA loan, it's going through federal foreclosure court and we won't see it at the local master commissioner level. They did say it could take up to a year for that foreclosure to occur.
If the council decides to proceed with tearing it down, do we have to wait till the mortgage company goes through all of their legal, excuse me, their legal?
I really don't know, I really don't know the answer to that, so.
The answer to that is no. In fact, that's why we had to inform the mortgage company that we were proceeding as we are tonight and that there will be an appealable order issued from this matter.
So they could appeal our decision if they decided there was some value in not tearing it down? Okay.
Everybody with a stake has an opportunity to appeal the order.
Any other questions?
If not, I thank you, Mr. House. We'll need to deliberate and because there's no exception in the open meetings law concerning that, we're going to deliberate in the open. And you all get to speak amongst yourselves and you'll need to make a determination about how you will complete the instructions here if you choose to move forward on what Officer House is recommending.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll put it out there. I would much rather see an empty lot than a boarded-up house.
Yeah, I personally, yeah, because I personally think that to put or to allow a thirty-day for repair, if he's lived there for fifteen years and it's in this shape, thirty days is not gonna do anything. I personally don't think.
That is my opinion as well. I feel like the neighbors and surrounding people have dealt with this long enough and my opinion would be to demolish it.
I agree as well. It's with the facts presented, it appears that it's definitely a nuisance property and I would agree with what everybody else has had to say.
Well, and keep in mind, even if you order that this be vacated and demolished, there's still thirty days for them to appeal this decision. So effectively, they have thirty days to try to put this in order and they, they can try to do that. And then they can go before a court of competent jurisdiction and attempt to have this overturned.
Because where it's a foreclosure, I guess they could, the mortgage company themselves could repair the home.
That's right.
Right, so. But Mr. Casey himself, I personally don't think he's gonna do anything at all, so.
He may not, but he might. And so, you know, that's perfectly fine and within his rights to do so. But even if you order that this property be vacated and demolished, with or without a requirement for repair, and you don't have to do that. If you read that carefully, you have the alternative to do it without an order requiring repair. You can simply order that it be vacated and demolished and.
Is there any way he could just forego everything? Just hand everything, I mean, just say, "Here you go", and just hand it over to the mortgage company?
That's, that's outside of our range of authority and concern at this point. And whether he does that with a dwelling on it or not, again, is outside of our authorization or concern.
What happens if we ordered demolition without addressing any opportunity to repair it and then low and behold, somebody does repair it within thirty days? Where does that put us?
Well, then, one of the stakeholders would have to make the appeal. Now, if a third party comes forward and does that, they're gonna have to intervene in this matter. And they could take that then to court with that final and appealable order and take action if they so chose. But they're gonna have to argue to the judge why they should have standing in this matter considering the state of affairs.
And what is the time period on demolition after that thirty-day appeal period? Is that set with our order? Or is there a time period that Mr. House will move forward with that?
It would have to be as soon as he could make arrangements for that to occur. But we'd certainly allow the order to mature before any action was taken.
I definitely, I mean, I see it as a safety concern too. Like, I mean, we're, summer break just started. Kids are bored. A vacant house is an attractive place for them to hang out, possibly start a fire, I mean, like you mentioned. So, it'd be nice to have it done sooner rather than later. But I realize we have others hurdles to go through before we can do it. Would this be a city expense? The demolition?
Yes.
I personally don't care if it would be a city expense. I think it needs to be gotten rid of.
Really, you really don't look at the expense. You look at the people sitting out front of us, our residents that keep their houses nice. So, you know, that's what we're looking for. We don't need this in our subdivisions.
I'm not against it being a city expense.
For these people, so.
Even though it would be a city expense, because we cannot provide public funds for private use, we would in fact file a lien. But as you've heard, we're gonna be really last in line at that point for liens. We'll have a superior lien with any unpaid taxes, but a lien for demolition is not gonna take priority or for a mortgage or a prior filed lien, we'd stand in line with everybody else.
Do we happen to know if there are unpaid taxes on this property by chance?
Mr. House is shaking his head, so I think that's an affirmative.
Okay. Sounds like most, most of us are, all of us are in favor. So where would we move forward in this, at this point?
Process, the process then this evening is, you as a group will need to make a determination about what findings of fact you make. And that could take the form of, "We accept as true the testimony provided by Officer House, Code Enforcement Officer Tom House and the exhibits that he provided to you and entered into the record this evening." You know, it can be something as simple as that and that can be your fact basis. And then, of course, you have to deliberate and make a determination about what your order is gonna be on the second page. Whether you're going to order that this be repaired, altered, or improved, or if it's going to be vacated or demolished, removed and closed. I mean, these are all opportunities for you tonight, but you're gonna have to order something if you make a factual finding of violation on page one. And I'm not trying to steer you to a decision because the decision is yours. And so I don't even make the presumption that you have findings of fact in support of a violation of chapter 155. Those are your decisions to make tonight. I'm not here to persuade. I'm just here to help you get to a conclusion. And so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. But that's the procedure, Councilman Kramer.
Thank you.
Kramer.
Well, I think we have plenty of facts and findings. I would say we need to get going on this ASAP. If we need to do it in steps as to a order of repair and alter and improving the structure, I think that's something that we need to basically start ASAP. If it's gonna be a thirty-day, start it tomorrow, yesterday. You know, I think it needs to be done right now so that we can go on and get that. Because like I said, personally, I don't think Mr. Casey's gonna do anything. So I think that thirty days, we're just gonna be waiting on what we do for our next step.
Do you believe that the city council, or would one of you like to make a motion that there be a finding that the structure under consideration is unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use according to the standards adopted under chapter 155?
I would make a motion on that.
Based on the findings of Mr. House and the City of La Grange code violation citation?
I'll second.
Motion in a second.
Yes.
Stephanie, will you do a roll call on the motion in a second, please?
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Ten?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Having passed, having passed that threshold, is someone willing to articulate so that we may put into writing the findings of fact that support that determination?
We can't use 155.02.
No, that's the law. We have to rely on facts. So these would things you may have heard or seen at the hearing tonight.
Based on case number seventeen dash zero zero one nine on the City of La Grange code violation citation.
And the testimony provided?
Testimony provided by Tom House and his findings in the citation.
And then in reference to property 1618 Cedar Springs Court.
And?
We have determined the property structure listed above is unfit for human habitation.
And are you also going to rely on the exhibits that were provided to you this evening?
Yes.
Someone want to so move?
Tell me.
Put that together from the record so that we can have an order for signature, but that was quite complicated. Thank you.
I think one of them did. I think Jean did.
It's up to you. You, you're, well, this is your, your finding, so if you want to put something different together, you can. We're still in limbo, because nobody's done anything than articulate so far what the motion might be. There's been no second on this part.
I made the original motion.
Okay.
Right? So...
I'll second.
Very good. And so the, the motion will stand. Mayor? We've got a first and a second.
Roll call.
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Motion carries.
Having passed that threshold, we'll turn to the second page, and based on these facts, the city council will need to determine what their order is going to be, and of course, your options are stated on the front page, the second underlying section. Your order can require the owner within the time specified to repair, alter, or improve the structure, to render it fit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, or to vacate, demolish, and remove and/or close the structure. So really, you have options here available to you based on the findings you've made. Does someone want to put forth a recommendation for the order? And you do that in the form of a motion, please. And please understand, you don't have to require all those things, because there's "or" opportunities in this, you can either require that there be a repair, alteration, or improvement to make the structure fit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, or to vacate, demolish, and remove and/or close the structure. So though, you have an either-or type of option here.
I believe Tom indicated that he would like a 30-day order to repair, just, wasn't that, just to make sure that all of, that...
And that's implicit, honestly, even if you were to order it vacated, they have 30 days to try to make repairs and then appeal that decision.
Okay.
So you don't have to do that, but you can include that, but that's going to give a time for, for that to happen, and if they succeed, then there will be no demolition of the property, and that's a choice.
Mm-hmm.
Or the other choice is that you order it vacated or demolished, and they have 30 days to appeal, and obviously, they have that time to make repairs, to make proof in a court of competent jurisdiction that it's the equity's favor keeping the property open.
Okay.
Imagine how anybody with all the things that's wrong with it could do.
See if I get this right. I'd like to make a motion to improve the structure where it be fit for habitat within 30 days, and if not, it be demolish, demolish, yeah, thanks. Under KRS, Chapter 424, they have 30 days to appeal, so that's why I used the 30 days.
Very good, is, there's a motion on the table?
I'll second it.
Tad, can you repeat your motion? Make sure I understand it?
Okay.
I'm not sure I understood what you said.
Give them 30 days to improve the structure for human habitism, and, and if not, that it would be demolished after the 30 days. They have to, we have to give them 30 days under the KRS 424 for appeal. According to what I'm reading here.
We have time to discuss this at any point?
I think the option is, is that one, or we don't have to, we, we have the option to still do the demolition portion, but they have 30 days to do that appeal, but within that timeframe, they could also do improvements, and then use that towards their appeal. Is that correct?
Correct.
In a sense, they would overturn our demolition and move forward from that point.
It sounds to me like there's the two options, just to kind of clarify this, if we move to demolish it and give them 30 days to repair specifically, in addition to that, if they make efforts to improve it, we, we might have our feet kind of held to the ground and not be able to do anything until a finding is made, whether or not they've actually improved it properly, but if we do it the other way, and order it vacated and demolished period, knowing that they have the 30-day time period to appeal, then the burden is then on them, I think as Mr. Emery said, to show that it's improved, and if they're not able to do that, we don't have the burden, the, the structure could be demolished. Did I say that correctly, Mr. Emery?
You did, and in fact, what you're probably aware of, and the council needs to be aware of this, if this is appealed, it's reviewed under a substantial evidence standard, in other words, did you have evidence of substance for you to reach the conclusion that you made? And that's going to be based on the findings that you've already adopted. Was, was that evidence sufficient for the conclusion that you're about to reach? And they have all opportunities to try to argue as they may, and that's their burden, as Councilman Taylor points out correctly, but right now, we've got a motion for the property to be within 30 days repaired, altered, or improved, so that it's rendered fit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, or if not, that it will be demolished and the property or the structure will be removed.
So would you rather for me to modify my motion?
Are you asking Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
I was just trying to clarify the difference.
Because, ma'am, we don't have to put the 30 days in, or we can put it...
If, if the 30 days is implicit with the appeal, you could probably have something like, the city council hear about orders that the structure under consideration is to be vacated and demolished after the appropriate appeal period has passed, or something to that nature.
That's fine. Oh, sounds good.
Would, would Tad need to add a date specific to when this timeframe would start, or is that...
No, it would start when the order's been entered by the clerk. There's, there's been a, a friendly amendment to Tad's own motion, but he'll need a second on that if we're going to move forward on his amended motion.
And the amendment was, Tad?
What Jason, what Jason said.
I believe that we're removing the, the time requirement to repair, alter, or improve, and simply to ask that it be...
Removing the 30 days.
Demolished and removed.
We're just going, okay.
Knowing that it's not going to actually be demolished before 30 days has passed.
We, we can't move on it before then. It's not final at that point. Until 30 days has passed. I'm sorry, did you get a second?
No.
No second?
Anybody got a second to Tad's motion, or?
I did a long time ago.
Oh, you did? No, she seconded the first motion.
Well, yeah, it's been changed since I seconded it.
Okay, you seconded again? Okay, I got a motion and a second. Stephanie?
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
And please be advised, there is a first offense fine that has been included in this particular order. It's found on the page with the signature line for the mayor. In order for the mayor to be able to sign this, we need a motion to authorize him to sign this appealable order, and for the clerk to make it a part of the city record. If someone can make such a motion, then the mayor is authorized to sign the order, after it's been completed according to your directions.
I authorize the mayor to sign this order.
Seconding him.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Takes us number 11, and we got second reading, public hearing of ordinance 42017. Steve?
Thank you. Commonwealth Kentucky City of LaGrange, ordinance number 42017, an ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018 by estimating funds for operations of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council of LaGrange, Kentucky, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and accepted same as presented, now therefore be it ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018 is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, ad valorem, $1,235,000. Motor vehicle, $130,000. Delinquent property tax, $50,000. Franchise tax, $300,000. Omitted tangible, $7,000. Business licenses, $360,000. Garbage commission, $380,000. 10% insurance tax premiums, $1,540,000. Miscellaneous income, $50,000. Penalties, $10,000. Interest income, $2,000. Utility tax, $55,000. Mine and minerals, $7,000. Received cleft, $44,000. Cleft portion retirement, $14,000. House bill 413, $13,000. Discounts, a credit of $20,000. Encroachment fees, $40,000. Bank share, $60,000. Community center, $4,000. Federal overtime, $6,000. Compensation tax, $1,749,030. ABC license fees, $15,000. Literate abatement grant, $4,000. From reserve account for new hire public works, $50,000. Grand total, $6,69,030. Expenses, administration, $1,029,626.20. Public property, $76,451.44. Special appropriations, $777,725. Public works, $902,676.36. Compensation tax, $1,749,030. Grand total, $6,69,030. Section 2, introduced, seconded, and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body, held on June 5, 2017, after the first reading held on May 1, 2017, signed by the mayor of the City of LaGrange, attested by the city clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law, and shall continue until amended or until June 30, 2018, whichever should first occur.
Thank you, Steve. Heard the second reading. Do we have a motion on ordinance 42017? Thank you, Tad.
A motion to accept.
A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Need a motion to go into public hearing?
Make a motion go into public hearing.
Thanks, Tad.
Second.
Thank you, Ann. All in favor for a public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We're now in public hearing. Anybody want to come forward? Nobody coming forward, we need a motion to go out of public hearing?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Tad. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Tad. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now open for discussion on ordinance 42017. Any questions?
I know we're going to vote on this budget tonight, and I just, there's just a couple of things that I wanted to say before we voted. As last year, I feel like we were not given enough time to discuss this. In the past year, since I've been on council, we've always talked, and we've always asked if we could get a budget committee. I think that doing a budget, when you're dealing with over a $6 million budget, I find it hard to be presented with $6 million budget and be expected to make a decision on where to allocate that money in a week's time. I have to say, I feel like sometimes it's done intentionally, so that we don't have the time to discuss it and given the proper time. I am completely fine with public works budget, police department budget, I honestly feel like you guys need a lot more, and you deserve a lot more than what you get, just to let you know that. I feel like you deserve a lot more with the work that you do. Same as last year, I'm very unhappy with what we have discussed with the admin budget. Every year, there is a COLA raise, and that, I was told that admin automatically gets a 3% every year. Well, we are the member of the Kentucky League of Cities, and on their website, it specifically has the COLA allowance that is given every year, and it goes back to 2008. This year's COLA allowance, it says for city officials and admin, 2017 was 2.1%, 2016 was .70%, 2015 .80%, 2014 1.5%, 2013 1.7%. Goes all the way back to 2008, and it never once reached a 3% increase. In 2008, it actually was 4.08. So I just have a problem with automatically giving a 3% increase when there's no evaluations done. I feel like as admin staff, when we're putting all this money into all these different things, that people need to be evaluated for the job that they're doing. If you're going to get an increase in your pay, then there needs to be an evaluation. I called Shelbyville and asked them if they were giving their employees a 3% increase in their admin department. She said, "No, we're doing a 2%, and it is based on evaluation." Well, when I questioned our admin, I was told, "No, we automatically do a 3%." So I have to say that, you know, I'm not very pleased with this budget, but I hate to see people in the police department and public works being punished and not getting what they deserved. So I just wanted to make it clear that I am not happy with this, and I think that there's a lot that we need to improve on, and I feel like having, you know, like I said, having one week to decide where $6 million goes is not enough time. I think that there needs to be a budget committee, and we have discussed this and discussed this, instead of two people making the decision on where all of this goes, and then giving it to us and saying, "Okay, here you go," three days before your council meeting, it's just not fair. So anyway, that's, that's, I just wanted, before we voted on this, I just wanted everyone to know how I felt on it.
I also have a problem with voting for the budget. As everybody knows, I brought up something at our budget meeting, and I really gave me no, acted like you never heard of such a thing. I did, and you know that what I want on the budget is to pave in front of our town school, and no one seemed to want to do it. Anyway, it is not county, it is not, anybody wants to look at this? It was put up here for anybody to look. It is Jefferson Street, old Jefferson Street. It is not 146 Highway, it is not Jefferson Street. It's old Jefferson Street. They brought it to me from planning and zoning, and again, I... And again, I will not vote for this if you cannot give any more interest to something that needs to be done than that.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just say, respond to two quick things. First, and I do, I would support having a budget committee. I think it would be beneficial for the council to have more involvement in that process. And I believe, Jean, most of us at the meeting support the idea of paving that street if we, if it's determined that it is city. I don't know of telling us what the name of it is...
No, no.
Says in black and white that it's in the city.
In zoning.
I understand. I just don't know if that, does that actually specify that it is a city street, is my only thing.
I don't know. That's planning and zoning. They said it specifies that.
That's, I think, the only thing that's blocking us as a council from approving expenditures to pave it, is if...
But it has to be in the budget, or it won't be done this year.
Well, there is street paving in the budget. There's 200,000 in the next one that we're getting ready to discuss, so. And that is a small bit, which, and I fully, and I fully support paving it if we can verify it's within the city.
Well, I was told it would only take $10,000. We already owed the school two from last year, two from next year, so it would only be $6,000. And I can't believe that it doesn't have to be specified in this budget. I think if it's not in there, somehow or other, we'll come up with, "No, we need it for this," or "We need it for that."
Jean, I'll just say one thing. As many streets as we have in the City of LaGrange that are, every one of our residents drive on, need paving bad. We've got LaGrange Acres that needs paving. We've got streets in there that need paving. That's just, the ones in there is in bad shape. Those residents use that every day. I, you're talking about spending $10,000 to pave a street that I don't know of anybody uses except probably the people going to school, or, you know, the, I don't know who parks there. It's shared with the KNS Radiator Shop or KNS next door. They share that also, so, you know, I...
It's not shared. I think it says here how much he actually has. It's not shared like half and half, like someone said. And that's fine, Joe, it's fine. I just say, I cannot believe that you can't be proud of what's in front of your school.
That didn't, being proud doesn't have anything to do with it.
Of course it does.
Jean, it's what we got to do for our citizens, our residents, that we've got streets that we need to spend $10,000 on, that these people drive back and forth every day home. That's in bad shape, so...
Well, these people do too. There's teachers come there, families come there, parents come there, there's visitors come there.
I don't know if there's any big potholes or anything in that street that's keeping them from, from coming in there.
Look at the parking, look at the parking, what they've got. There is big holes. There are big holes in that pavement. And whether it's pride or not pride, it's just something that we should do. I went to every school in this county, there's not one that looks like ours. Not one that looks like LaGrange Elementary School. None. They all have nice pavements, nice sidewalks, nice everything. But in LaGrange, we have this crappy looking thing in front of our school.
Yeah.
Oh, that doesn't matter?
I still, I still think a school board ought to step up with it.
It does not belong to the school board. They cannot...
It does not belong to the city, Jean.
Yes, it does. It is a city street.
I disagree.
It's a city street.
I disagree. I disagree totally.
I don't care if you do disagree. It's right there, plain as day. It is not 146th.
Didn't we decide at our last meeting that we were going to get someone with the state school board and sit down and discuss this together?
Yeah, we did, but nobody ever did anything that I know of.
Well, this was just a few weeks ago that we met, so...
I know. Well, I thought you told me that you were going to contact somebody that night.
So I think, I have contacted the school board on this, and I was told that it was not the school board property.
It isn't. It is not.
I'm all for you. Hey, I have kids. My daughter goes there. I've seen cars get hit in that parking lot just last week and the week before. I've seen two. And I am totally for it. It does need something done. We just have to do it. We just have to figure out whose property it is, because no one wants to take claim. Joe says it's not city property. School board says it's not school board property. We need to find out, we need, like we talked about in the, in the meeting, we need to sit down and discuss someone from the state, someone from the school board, someone from the city, and we need to sit down together...
And somebody from the county.
And let someone take claim as to who this property belongs to. Once we find out who the property belongs to, then I think we can take our next step. And I am totally for making that school presentable.
And not if it's not in our budget, we can't take the next step.
Well, there, I mean, as I said, there's 200,000 in paving in the next budget.
I'm done, I'm finished. That's it.
Well, I'm going to weigh in on this.
Okay, weigh in on it.
It, the road is clearly by its use a public passageway. I've observed the public use that particular road many, many times. My understanding, this is just an understanding, historically was that that is how LaGrange Road used to run.
Right.
And the road was closed at one point, but it was open, obviously, at, I guess it's the Sixth Street side. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And so there's one way in and one way out. But knowing that there's a public passageway does not define the ownership of the road. In order to do that, you have to, if you go to court for it, you have to present positive proof of dedication, whether that be dedication of right of way to the state, dedication of right of way to the county, or dedication of right of way to the municipality, the City of LaGrange. Records will have to be investigated to determine whether or not there's ever been a dedication to the city. I have not seen that document, and I haven't been charged with investigating to determine if that document exists. But I will tell you this, if we spend public municipal funds on property that does not belong to us, we are violating the law.
I'm not asking that.
If the city does have a dedicated road, and there's proof in the records, the public records in the deed room that say that, or that are in our records that indicate it's dedicated for public use by the City of LaGrange, or has been given to us through dedication, then it's a different story. But I haven't seen that yet. And so having said that, it's, it's fine to set aside funds in the municipal road aid for paving roads and then make a discretionary call about what's done and what's not done with that money. I think before we embark upon entering on that property and making any improvements, we have to know we have a right to do that. Because if it is a state road, or it is a county road, and we come upon it and improve it, we may well have violated the law in doing so.
What about when the city closed it?
And so, I'm not, I'm not saying that one where, it doesn't matter if they closed it or not. If they have not deeded that property, if, let's say for a minute, the state owned that road at one point, and they closed one end but left one open. Unless they've taken some positive action to give that to the county, the school board, or the city, and it's of record, then it's still a state road.
I don't know. I didn't look for that, but I do know that the city is the one that actually closed it. If you left it open, probably got it fixed.
And if there's documentation of that, I'd, I'd like to see that as part of the entirety of the evidence we should look at before we take action. But tonight's budget will cover that if it's decided that that's how some of that money should be spent. It's not a no vote, if you will, to work on a city road. In fact, it's a yes vote to work on city roads. But I understand your position, Jean, and I just wanted you to be aware that I have yet to be provided with enough information to be able to say that the city can pave that road.
Well, I am for the police to get a raise, and I am for Cory's group to get one, but I am not ready, I'm not agreeing to the other, so it will be a no vote.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I just had a couple of quick comments, just for the record. I do share some of the concerns from the council members, that there's not really been a lot of participation asked of by the council for initial budget discussions, you know, prior to the initial budget actually being brought to our attention. I do think the budget committee served a purpose back when that was utilized. I echo Shannon's concerns with the cost of living adjustment issue. From what I've looked at, this budget looks very similar to last year's budget, and it has some of the similar concerns that last year's budget had. I think that passed five to four, if my memory serves me correctly, with the addition of the cost of living issues that are part of it this year. So that's just my comments for the record. Thank you very much.
Can I say something? I just want to let everyone know that I am so tired of getting, of hearing about the administration being slammed. It is my duty to evaluate the employees under me. Every employee under me does a wonderful job. I do not criticize no one's job at all, because it's being done correctly. Every morning, we sit around the round table, have coffee, and discuss every morning what needs to be done, who does what, and I think my department deserves a 3% raise, because everyone does a good job. If no one did a job, nothing would get done, with the garbage, with the geese, any of the events been going on, like the Arts on the Green. I mean, Faith attends the meetings for Discovery Downtown LaGrange. Sue does a wonderful job on the bus. I'm just so tired of administration getting slammed. If any of you have a problem with administration, come and talk to me. I, I don't, I don't like my department being slammed out in the open public. I just don't like it. It's not fair to me. That's it.
Stephanie, I didn't slam your department at all. You all have a very high wage. If you do not realize that, you have, are paid very, very well. And yes, you are the head of that department, and you, you need it. That's, that's exactly right. Used to be there was two girls. I know we have much more work now. We didn't have the bus then, and I think they do a wonderful job. I'm not saying that, but we broke down what you all made, and my Lord.
May I ask who determines the 3% increase when COLA has different numbers? Where does the 3% come from?
I decide on that.
And then everyone else in the state uses lower numbers? So for the past, since 2008, it's been a 3% increase every single year, when there were some years that KLC had it listed as .7, .5, 1.7?
Teachers got 1% this year and none last year. That doesn't have anything to do with that.
But we aren't teachers. We don't work for the state.
I said that doesn't have anything to do with that, but that's just an example. They got nothing last year.
And are you given an evaluation, Stephanie?
Am I? No, I am not.
Does someone evaluate you? And see, and I think as a mayor, a mayor when runs the city, I think that is something that Joe should do as mayor. I think our mayor should be sitting down and evaluating his employees.
Shannon and I mayor every day, and I evaluate every one of them. I direct the people in that office, along with Stephanie. If anything be, that needs to be done, it gets done. I have no, not one problem with any employee in administration. If I did, I would be talking to them, or either they wouldn't be in there. That's the bottom line. That's the way I run the office. That's the way I run it with Stephanie. Stephanie, you know, I, I have no problem with these employees. What, what, what I've always recommended, I didn't know, I stayed on city council for 19 years. I had no idea what went on in city hall till I stepped in there in January 2015. I hit a brick wall. It's amazing what goes on in there. It's amazing what these people...